Good evening.
The time is now six o'clock. We're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. Just a reminder to the commissioners, when you are speaking, please make sure to unmute your microphone so you can be heard. I'm doing the same right now. The public who did not register in advance can watch this live stream on our city's YouTube channel. For live Spanish translation services, please dial extension 720-386-9023 and use code 104091* for Spanish translation services.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Will staff please do a roll call?
Commissioner Van Huisen.
Present.
Commissioner Wiltuff.
Present.
Commissioner Schechter.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson.
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At tonight's meeting, we will discuss the last regular meeting minutes, transportation master plan, villages at Buffalo Run East Land Use Plan Amendment, Murray Family Farm subdivision plat, and LDC text amendments for accessory dwelling units and the definition of family. Before getting to our agenda this evening, I would like to recognize Commissioner Nelson, who is an alternate sitting in this evening. Can I please have a motion to approve the October 7th, 2025 meeting minutes?
I second move.
Second?
I will second.
I'll second. It's fine. We're good. So Commissioner Schechter, a motion by Commissioner Schechter, I seconded the motion. Please open electronic voting.
Bear with me just a moment. We'll redo that. Sorry, I didn't have you all loaded to vote.
Do we need to re-vote?
Yes, go ahead and let me open it up. There we go. Yep. Can go ahead and re-vote. Commissioner Schechter.
I'm sorry?
Can you just re-vote? Sorry, it's not showing up on my end.
Oh, re-vote. Yeah, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Four yeses, zero no, zero abstain. I will now open, oh, sorry, the first agenda items, or second agenda item, the transportation master plan. I will now open the hearing for the first item. At this time, will Commerce City Public Works come forward for their item, the transportation master plan? May we have Public Works Director Jenna Han give an overview of the transportation master plan?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to see you all. Jenna Han, nice to meet you, Commissioner Nelson. So, tonight, we're talking about the transportation master plan again. As a quick reminder, we did go through a presentation with our consultant back in October, but just so we're all on the same line, or same page, and for the benefit of our public, I'd like to give a quick overview of what a transportation master plan is and what our particular document is drafted to accomplish. So, transportation plan will guide our city's transportation investments over the next 25 years. So, it really is a long-range roadmap that will guide our investments and our policies in public works, as well as throughout the city, to support continued growth, foster vibrant neighborhoods, and enhance quality of life for our residents, workers, and visitors to the city. So, our specific plan outlines community priorities for safer streets, better transit opportunities, expanded walking and biking connections, and improved mobility for all roadway users. In addition to those safety and multimodal improvements, the plan also identifies where roadway expansion or reconstruction may be helpful to manage growth, improve traffic flow, and provide better connections throughout the city. And while the plan is currently still in draft form, it will not substantially change between now and the final review and adoption by city council in February of 2026. So, for some additional background, we just wrapped up our third and final phase of public engagement. The first phase of public engagement, we had over 800 participants, and by the time we got down to round three, we only had 13 comments, which we take as a very positive sign, that the plan incorporated all of the feedback that we've received at open houses and through online forums. So that was a really big milestone for us, and the team is just working to massage the final details out in that plan. But because it is such a critical planning document, it was very important to me that Public Works seeks Commissioner feedback and buy it, and I'm grateful for all the feedback we heard at the last meeting, and again, we're working to get that incorporated into the final document. But my ask tonight is for Planning Commission to consider offering support. So when we do go to city council with this on February 2nd, hopefully, we could share a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Are there, are there any questions for, for staff? Commissioner Schechter?
Yeah, I do. Are we going to go through the presentation, or first?
We will not be going through the presentation again, no.
Okay, because, so I looked it over. Thank you for sending it out. It was attached to the agenda. Yes, so, I was wondering, was the plan reviewed by the city attorney's office for constitutional compliance?
Yes, the plan was reviewed by the city attorney's office, and the city attorney's office did not have any significant legal concerns with the draft plan.
Okay, so there's no, no problems under Cresson, for example?
Yeah, the city attorney's office did not have any significant concerns with the draft plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from any of the commissioners? Seeing none. Do any members of the public wish to provide comment? Seeing none. Oh, Ms. Han, you can take your seat.
I'm sorry?
You can take your seat.
Oh, great, thank you.
We'll call you back if we need any rebuttal. Is there anyone attending virtually tonight who wishes to speak?
No one signed up beforehand, and we have no one that has raised their hand.
Thank you. At this time, I will now close the hearing for this item. Is there any additional discussion from the commission? Seeing none. Can I please have a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission, in her finding that the proposed transportation master plan is satisfactory for the Commerce City, and they recommend the approval to city council.
A point of order, is that where we're at? I didn't think we were actually doing that tonight, or?
Yes, we need a recommendation from the Planning Commission forwarded on to council.
Ah, okay, thanks. Sorry. I didn't realize we were there. Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Huisen, a second by Commissioner Nelson. Is there any additional discussion?
Yeah, I understand. I'd like to discuss it a little. I think the plan, I think the language, it's not good language. Appealing to particular races of people, appealing to really vague language, like equity embedding that in a long-term planning document that we're supposed to look towards. My problem with the phrases like equity and, you know, through an equity lens and this kind of language, is that it means something different to every person. And we were here in an earlier meeting, and I asked a staffer, oh, so what does that mean? What is through an equity lens? And that was the answer that I got, that we heard, was, well, it kind of means something different to everyone. In Chicago, it means racial preferences for African-American contractors specifically, and that's just always wrapped up in lawsuits. Here, it may not mean that, but it's kind of unclear. I would like, so, if we want something, like, if we want, everyone in Commerce City should have the same access to parks, I think we should say exactly that, you know? And whatever, if we want to mean, if we mean that whatever neighborhood has the least amount of parks, well, they get them first. You know, like, equality is how I'm used to thinking of that. Like, so just really saying what we mean. Yeah, so, so that's why I'm not happy with it currently.
Commissioner Van Huisen?
I understand where you're coming from. I seriously do. But equitable is not the same as equal, you know, and those are very separate words. I don't have a problem with it, because I, as you say, what it means in Chicago, I'd like to see that there's a definition that Chicago means this. You know, I don't have a problem, but I understand what you're saying, and thank you for bringing it up.
Any other discussion points? Seeing none. Please open electronic voting. The motion passes. Three yeses, one no, and no abstains. The next case is LUP 25-0002, the Villages at Buffalo Run East Land Use Plan Amendment. I will open the public hearing on this case. As a reminder to the commission, the applicant will follow, the applicant will follow, oh, sorry, the applicant will present, followed by staff. At the conclusion of both of those presentations, we will ask any questions that we have. Once all those questions have been asked, the public will have their turn to speak on the case. We will start with members of the public attending in person before moving to those attending virtually. With that, I will ask Planner Nick Berry to please announce this case.
LUP 25-0002, Local Homes is requesting approval of a land use plan amendment to amend the comprehensive plan designation from Northern Range Commercial to Mixed Commercial for the property located at the southeast corner of East 120th Avenue and Chambers Road. The subject property consists of approximately 13.8 acres and is zoned PUD or Plan New Development. At this time, I'll invite the applicant forward to begin their presentation.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello.
My name is Paul Shukas. Thank you very much for taking the time this evening to listen to our presentation, and thank you very much for your service.
Oh, and Mr. Shukas, if you'd just announce your address, just for the record.
My address is 200 Calamith Street in Denver, Colorado, 80223. So PCS Group's a land planning and landscape architecture company, and our team's assisting with the planning and entitlement portion of this project. Also here tonight is Tommy Pucciano with Local Homes. So just really quickly about Local, they were founded in 2012. They're a locally-based home builder headquartered in Greenwood Village. They typically focus on infill residential sites, both single-family detached and attached homes throughout the metro area. They basically build from Aurora to Colorado Springs. They're really the type of builder that focuses on infill-type communities, and they are one of the largest home, privately-held home builders here in Colorado. So Local is no stranger to Commerce City. In fact, they've already built in the majority of Buffalo Run, as well as other parts of Commerce City. They have experience in building both single-family detached and attached homes here. So, before we get too far, this just gives me a moment to thank staff, especially Nick Berry, for his support in guiding us through the process. Jason Rogers, Garrett Anderson, and Brian Feta Place have also been instrumental. They've been orchestrating a partnership between the landowner and the city to initiate activating the hard corner of 120th and Chambers with a sit-down restaurant. They've been working together through both tax and land incentives in a public-private partnership to try to execute this. So, we held a neighborhood meeting on October 9th. We had a really good turnout for that. We received a ton of feedback. Most of the conversation focused less on our comp plan amendment and more on a conceptual site plan. Folks raised a lot of concerns about architecture, parking, and traffic, and we're here, we're going to take that all into consideration, should this move forward with you all this evening. So instead of just showing you a standard vicinity map, we thought it would be more helpful to show what's in proximity to the site. This is truly an infill parcel. It's surrounded by residential neighborhoods on the south and on the east, and commercial uses on the north and the west. There are four rent and for sale, single-family homes right next door, as well as condos just across 120th Ave. The other portion of the site, six adjacent to a self-storage facility, a 7-Eleven with gas, and directly across the street, you'll find a Shell gastration, a Vet in Santiago's restaurant. It's also important to note that at the northwest corner of Chambers and 120th Ave, there's going to be a future commercial annexation application pending for that corner as well. So, there's a lot happening around the property, and this context kind of explains why we're requesting a comp plan amendment tonight. If the amendment is approved, we'd be proposing townhomes on a portion of the property, creating a transition between our existing, the existing residential neighborhoods and the surrounding commercial development. So, on this slide, the orange area represents where we would be proposing townhomes, while the red area would remain commercial, consistent with the city's vision for mixed-use development along 120th Avenue corridor there. So, the character of the area has changed significantly over time, and it's going to continue to evolve. But the biggest takeaway is that development on the south and east side of this site is basically built out, while this site essentially remains vacant. That's kind of what's driving this request, is to update the comp plan designation so that the property can support a broader mix of uses that better reflects what's already happening in the area, and in turn, hopefully attract more desirable commercial services to the property. So, this area is located within the northern neighborhoods. It's, there's already a significant amount of residential here. So, the proposal continues that pattern by retaining a commercial component while introducing that much-needed attached residential housing. It's compatible with a lot of the surrounding area, and it aligns with the city's vision for a balanced mix of uses within that northern neighborhood, and it also begins to adjust the residential housing diversity by offering potential townhomes there. We're going to potentially be amending the economic development map from Northern Range Commercial to Mixed Commercial. While this is a really slight adjustment, it fits comfortably within the surrounding community. It brings a mix of residential homes, and the homes would help increase housing diversity and address that missing middle housing need that the city has identified, creating attainable housing opportunities for teachers, for healthcare workers, emergency service personnel, and other essential members of the workforce who are vital to the local economy here. So, we'd also revise the residential area framework map to reflect this as part of a new PUD amendment that would follow, should this get approved tonight. That's areas shown on blue on this map. So, I'm going to deviate for the next five minutes. I'm going to be as transparent as possible with this, because we can only talk about colored maps for so long. So, when we had our meeting with the neighbors, all these map revisions were great conversation, but the neighbors were way less interested in what the maps we were amending, and more interested in the zoning and the site plan portion of this project. And even though we're not formally at that stage, we've been using those conversations to think ahead, understand how this comp plan amendment would ultimately translate into a PUD amendment and a future site plan layout for the neighborhood. This is the existing PUD for the property, which we discussed with our neighbors during our neighborhood meeting, so that's why I show it to you. And zoning is a really difficult thing to explain sometimes, because it's really a high-level document that speaks to building forms and development standards, as opposed to site planning. However, if the comp plan amendment moves forward, we would be amending this document to better align with today's standards, which gets back to that blue area of the map that I was just showing you. The key takeaways from that PUD future amendment would be, first, on this, we would reduce the maximum allowable height from 50 feet down to 35 feet, which is way more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Second, we'd introduce alley-loaded townhomes to this as a horizontally-integrated use, as opposed to a vertically-integrated one, which is something you'd see typically in downtown Denver along Broadway, and we don't feel like that's really appropriate to this context. We'd also amend setbacks and things like that to be more conducive to alley-loaded townhomes. So, once again, I deviate a little bit, but this is what that revised PUD amendment would look like. The orange area represents where the proposed townhomes would be located. The two lighter-colored parcels would be unchanged, and then that red car parcel is that commercial corner I brought up. This is the area where the city and the current developer are working together to incentivize a user and offer up the land, along with tax rebates, a low incentive loan, building fee waivers, and an expedited process to help attract a full-service sit-down restaurant. This effort is intended to spur new investment and create a gateway into the larger commercial corridor extending east along 120th Ave. Should the amendment be approved tonight, we'd also look at updating this PUD document to better align with some more current city uses, as it relates to the city's land development code getting better consistency with the development vision. All right. I'm going to still stay deviated for a little bit longer, because once again, there's only so much I can talk about in terms of a land use map amendment. So, when it comes to this, I just want to stress that this is a conceptual site plan. It's not part of our amendment. We're here to discuss tonight, but we've taken the foundation of what this comp plan amendment of what this comp plan amendment represents and began testing it conceptually, looking at how homes, streets, and open spaces might fit together in a way that respects the land and the surrounding neighborhood. There's still a lot to figure out, and I'm not here tonight to discuss detailed zoning with you. However, hearing a lot of early perspectives from both city staff and the neighbors has been really helpful in guiding the next phase of design should this move forward. I mention that because if we start diving too deep into building layouts and streets layouts, it's going to be hard for me to definitively answer you, just because the city hasn't been formally engaged through that plating process yet. But they will be should this comp plan amendment get approved. So what you're looking at right now is 97 townhome units. That could obviously change once we get more formal feedback, but with that said, we've already received preliminary suggestions from the city to help us better understand intersection spacing and utility layouts. We've also heard comments from the neighborhood identifying opportunities on this site plan where more guest parking could be allocated, and then we would refine that moving forward. So these next images are conceptual perspectives. This was just taken at the 120th and Jasper corridor, and this, that corner looking southwest. What we're trying to achieve is a community that blends naturally with what's already around it. So the goal is to create a smooth transition between some of the existing single-family homes and the townhomes. And these townhomes offer just a different choice, something that's residential and fits within the area's character, but they're smaller, they're lower maintenance, and it could be for those who don't really need a detached home. They also fit that missing middle housing gap, providing attainable homeownership opportunities for essential members of the Commerce City workforce who want to live and invest in the community that they serve. You know, we've done our best to place an emphasis on walkability and open space, connecting sidewalks, gathering areas, and green pockets throughout this site. Once again, this is conceptual, but the overall idea is still strong, and it's to create a neighborhood that feels like an extension of what's already there. So as we move clockwise, this view is taken from 119th and Jasper looking northwest. Here you can kind of see a landscape buffer along 119th Ave. The homes are set back from the street, and that front architecture faces the streetscape. You can also see some of the passive green spaces along Jasper, creating a softer edge in transition. This view is taken on 119th Ave looking northeast. You can see how the fronts of the townhomes face the street, creating a strong attractive street presence, with garages tucked behind, accessed from the alleys in the rear. In the background, you'll notice some of those commercial pad sites and the existing club car wash, which will remain on the property. All right. So to come full circle back to our application and to wrap this up, now that you see the intent of the amendment, we feel like the proposal is consistent with the comp plan and the city's land development code. It responds to current and social economic conditions by introducing housing diversity and flexibility while maintaining opportunities for commercial development. The proposal won't negatively impact the surrounding area or its future development, and will enhance compatibility and long-term viability. Overall, we feel like the amendment promotes better public health, safety, and general welfare by supporting balanced growth and a sustainable land use with a complete connected community. So with that, I'll be here to answer any questions you might have, and we respectfully request your recommendation this evening. Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you this evening, Vultures at Buffalo Run Land Use Plan Amendment, mentioned the case number there, LUP 250002. So I guess to start high level, since we don't see a whole lot of these here, especially with the new 2045 comp plan, what is a land use plan amendment? The applicant kind of went over this a little bit, but it is changing the comprehensive plan in some way, specifically around land use and future land uses. It's important to keep in mind that comprehensive plans are not regulatory, so they don't necessarily dictate what development can happen. It's more long-term vision to say, what would we like to see here? And it's not parcel-specific in that you're going lot by lot. It's more broad strokes to say, this is what we'd like to generally see in this area. So we wanted to point that out. So what is Planning Commission's role in this? Well, as dictated in the charter, you know, you're to oversee the comprehensive plan and the writing thereof. And so based on that, you know, this is before you tonight to make a recommendation on if city council should adopt those changes into the 2045 comprehensive plan. So the applicant kind of went a little bit deeper on this scale here. So you'll see at the top, we're at the land use plan amendment, they're highlighted in yellow. They mentioned some of the details of the PUD zone document. That's on file with the city, and you see the case numbers are listed there for you. You can, you're able to search those via our online portal if you wish to kind of view those documents, but they will be coming before you at a future Planning Commission meeting should this land use plan move forward. And then as we move down the list, you're going to get more and more details. So the sketch plot is currently on file with the city. It's high-level lotting for the city, the project to see where the alleys would go, where the lots might land, that sort of thing. There are future applications, so as you may be aware, the city recently adopted the preliminary plat process. That is a plat that will come before you all, as well as the zone document that was mentioned previously. And then the final plat and site development plan are administrative processes, but they will have the most detail out of all of these applications listed here. All the lot widths, the architecture, all the details for the project. So like I said, as we get further on this list, we'll get more details. At this point, we don't have some of those details. As I mentioned, you know, it's the southeast corner of 120th and Chambers Road. The specific requests are twofold, as the applicant showed. So it's amending the economic development map and the residential area framework map. So the economic development framework map will be changing from north range commercial to mixed commercial, and the residential area is currently unspecified, meaning that there has no designation on that map to greenfield development for a portion of that property. Aerial of the site, the applicant went over this in detail, so I won't spend too much time on it, but it's here in case we need to reference something. As you can see, though, the roadways will be built, are built out, and the applicant is planning on using, and I'll use my mouse here, using these existing built local roadways as the foundation for which they will connect to. So as far as connections to Jasper and out to 120th and south, and even east to Chambers, there will be no new connections established with their proposal. They will use those existing roadways. So applicant mentioned this about the context of the development, but we did want to mention there is a traffic study that's on file with the city and were provided to you in your packet, in being reviewed concurrently with the PUD zone document amendment and sketch plot applications. But we did want to point out to you that mentioned within that traffic study, there was an analysis where they compared allowable commercial uses that could be developed on the site to the residential expected traffic. And as you can see there, the 24-hour daily trips goes down by 3,780. Generally speaking, the uses that were compared to was a fast-food restaurant, a daycare, and a bank were the three uses that were contemplated, and then it, like I said, the traffic is expected to be lower overall compared to what those uses would generate. As we've learned to apply this 2045 comprehensive plan, it's layered, so you can kind of see there how we would stack these maps on top of one another. So the character area maps, broad strokes just says generally, uses that would be allowed in this area, and uses that would be prohibited in these areas. They are large swaths of land and are not very prescriptive. The framework maps are a little bit more prescriptive in that they show, okay, so when the north range commercial, or excuse me, when the northern neighborhoods' character area says residential and commercial are allowed, the framework map shows us where those things should be located, right? So the residential area map would say residential in these areas, the economic development framework map would show commercial development opportunities in these specific areas throughout the plan. And then not a part of this request, but we also have corridor plans in this 2045 comprehensive plan, which are even more hyper-specific to major roadways in the city, and are even more selective as far as where commercial should be located, where monument or signage should go, or wayfinding, that's the word, wherefinding signage should go, and things, details like that are in the corridor plans. Like I said, 120th and Chambers Road are not specific corridor plans listed in the 25 comprehensive plan, so they do not need to be amended, but just wanted to mention that for your knowledge. So the economic development framework map, as I mentioned, provides guidance for where commercial use should be located. There are a couple of different types of commercials. You know, in this application, north range commercial and mixed commercial may allow similar uses. So when you're talking about, you know, grocery store, hospital, you know, surgery centers, something like that, right? The community, we hear a lot of community feedback that you're seeking. They may fit in both of these contexts. The key difference is the allowance for residential, really, between the two. So the north range commercial does not contemplate residential. It strictly talks about retail and entertainment. The mixed commercial talks about commercial, community commercial, office space, and then high-density residential is that added piece there for that mixed commercial. And then we'll just kind of show the colored maps here. So as you can see, 120 Chambers, this orange color is that north range commercial, and then that, this yellow color is that mixed commercial. And then there is specific request. The residential area framework maps provides guidance for locating residential uses. There are similar to the commercial uses, there are different types of residential. For the northern range, the predominant color that you'll see is this blue color when I flip to the map, and then brown. So the brown color is existing residential to be maintained. Blue is greenfield development, basically future development opportunities for residential. And then anything gray on the map is unspecified or is not contemplated for residential uses. And so you'll see on this map here, it's gray, indicating that residential uses are not, should not be located in this area. So the applicant is proposing to amend this map as well. And the other piece of it is that anywhere that there's yellow, the mixed commercial on the economic development framework map, there is a corresponding blue greenfield development on the property. So we're keeping with the way that the comprehensive plan has been laid out for, as far as locating these residential uses. So here's the proposal, adding that blue. They're restricting it, so rather than using the whole property for greenfield development, they're restricting it to the limits of where the townhomes are proposed to try to protect future commercial development on this other side of the corner there. Quickly, I just wanted to mention that this application is supported by other goals of the comprehensive plan. So there are the multiple chapters that go deep into how the character areas are functioning, how we should look at housing in neighborhoods, commerce and employment opportunities. So for character areas, you know, it talks about how multifamily residential should be located near arterial roadways. In this instance, the arterial roadway is 120th and Chambers Road. And then we should have a mix of land uses. So the, currently, the housing needs, and it was mentioned in the applicant's presentation, but they didn't specifically highlight it, the housing needs assessment that was done recently and is still in draft form, but was done formally in 2018 and is being redone now. We have about 75% or 78%, depending on which study you're looking at, of single-family detached as far as housing options for residents. So what this is proposing is the townhome development, where you're adding additional options for residents to live in, so that's kind of how it fits that character areas map. The housing in neighborhoods chapter talks about having a desirable transition between single-family detached development and commercial development. So the townhomes kind of intervening between those two is providing a transition where you're increasing the intensity of the residential without having, you know, single-family detached directly adjacent to a high-intensity commercial use, like a fast-food restaurant or something, right? So it's providing a transition for the residents to the south and east, to the commercial development internal to the site. And then again, the mix of housing options I kind of already hit on. And then for commerce and employment, so the goal of this horizontal mixed-use project is to have a pedestrian-oriented development where residents that live in these townhomes can walk to their commercial uses directly adjacent. And then, one of the goals of the commerce and employment chapter talks about promoting healthy and a local economy. So residential and commercial have a symbiotic relationship, right? So the more residents are there, it attracts commercial users and vice versa, right? So the commercial users need residents to support their businesses. So there's a symbiotic relationship there that this application is seeking to kind of support by adding more residential units to this commercially-zoned area. So applicant mentioned, so the neighborhood meeting was held on October 9th at the Buffalo Run Golf Course and their clubhouse. There were 28 people in attendance, which is a large amount, somewhat abnormal for what we usually get. The questions that they had were about future plans for East 120th Avenue. There was some discussion about the planned expansion, widening the southern 120th to two lanes, so from one lane, and I'll flip back to the aerial real quick so you can see that. So you can see it's currently, comes over this bridge, and is a one-lane road as it extends past the limits of the property. There's an expansion planned, which will add a second lane for travel on the southern side of 120th. So there was some discussion about that. There was some discussion about the public parking. They specifically mentioned east 119th Avenue gets a lot of on-street parking, has a public street. There's certain limitations for what the city can do from an enforcement perspective, right, being a public roadway, but there are some concerns about how loaded that on-street parking is currently, and how this application may impact that on-street parking. And then there was a lot of discussion about the left turns leaving the community. So on Jasper Street, trying to turn left onto 120th, and on 119th Avenue, trying to turn left to go south on Chambers Road. And the traffic study does back this up, so they received what's not, what the industry standard of is E, which is considered a failing intersection, meaning that the wait times are significant and lead to people potentially making unsafe decisions as far as spacing, right? So when you're having to wait a long time, you might be willing to make more of a risk as far as how much space you have to make that turn. So like I said, the traffic study, it does kind of back up their concerns that they had, but that was some of the major points of discussion that came out of that neighborhood meeting. Five public comments were received and provided to you all, and they should be printed out in front of you if you wanted to review or reference those. Generally, those comments were opposed to this proposal. They were talking about wanting more commercial development, traffic, some of the similar concerns that we've heard at the neighborhood meeting, in addition to the interest in wanting to see commercial development over residential development. So finally here, we'll get into the approval criteria, which this decision will be based upon. So the first one here, the comprehensive plan and related element thereof is needed. So the city's economic development division has reviewed the framework map and has determined that it's overly optimistic. So a lot of the areas highlighted for commercial development may not be feasible from a commercial developer's standpoint, especially following the COVID-19 pandemic, where resident or commercial developers view land acquisition a little bit differently, since we're mostly online. view land acquisition a little bit differently, since we're mostly online shoppers now, right? So they feel like if we were to strictly adhere to the way the economic development framework map is presented, we would end up with vacant or underutilized land as it's presented currently. Item B here, the proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding area. So we kind of talked about how the housing and neighborhoods chapter is looking for that transition between single-family development and the commercial development. So it kind of is providing that transition and is, makes it somewhat compatible with the neighborhoods. And like I said, we'll get some of the more like design-related elements kind of later with the PUD zone document and that sort of thing to talk about how they can try to match architecture and that sort of thing. But for the purposes of the land use plan amendment, like I said, they're providing that transition from single-family development to commercial development. C here, the proposed amendment will have no significant impacts on the transportation and services. So as mentioned about the traffic, there is already traffic issues in the area, and by decrease, from the change from commercial users to residential use will lower the traffic impacts, the ultimate final development, right? So, and they're able to help mitigate their impacts through improvements they'll be making through impact fees that they'll pay. So at the time of building permit, they might pay to school district fees or things like that. And then we'll jump to D here. The proposed amendment will have minimal effects on service provisions. So as an infill site, kind of as the applicant highlighted, all services have been built out, and so they'll just be connecting to those existing services. So there'll be minimal effect there. And then item E talks about the city's ability to annex the property. It's already in the city, so this criteria is not applicable. Item F here, the proposed amendment is consistent and logical with the expansion of services. So it's already included into the South Adams County Fire Protections Service District and the South Adams County Water Service District. So the expansion of services is necessarily needed, but since it's an infill project, there's also city services like police and public works that extend well beyond the boundary of this specific amendment. So you can say criterion F is met. Criterion G, strict adherence to the comprehensive plan would result in a situation neither intended nor in keeping with other key elements and policies of the comprehensive plan. Kind of as mentioned, there are several items listed in the chapters of the comprehensive plan that are in keeping with this application to allow residential as a transition for this particular area. Approval criteria H, the proposed plan amendment will promote the public welfare and will be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. For this criteria, staff, like, you know, we were talking about that symbiotic relationship between commercial and residential. And so the allowance to add residential uses here would be in the benefit of the community to help attract commercial users at 120th and Chambers. Some considerations for your discussions. As mentioned, the economic development department supports the change to the economic development framework because of that map being potentially over-optimistic. And then again, allowing residential uses to be included will ultimately lower traffic impacts of a full build-out of this site. Staff recommends approval of the land use plan amendment because it's consistent with the overall goals of the comprehensive plan and the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berry and Mr. Skrokis. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commissioners? Seeing none. Is there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Seeing none. Do any members of the public wish to provide comment on these cases, on this case? Seeing none. Is there anyone attending virtually tonight who wishes to speak?
No one signed up beforehand, and no one has raised their hand to speak.
Thank you. At this time, I will now close the public hearing for these cases. Is there any discussion from the commission?
I would just like to make a point, just because I'm internally conflicted with this because it's on both sides, hearing what the public wants just in terms of more commercial. And it's the cart and horse argument, like, you need more rooftops to build commercial to support that. But then it's looking at the long-term instance of the plan. So even in the name of the plan, the 2045 plan, so we're talking about the economic drivers for the current, but it's giving away a commercial node at the very northwest of the city to do that. And I do support the idea of the buffer using this sort of housing as a buffer between commercial, but I would argue that there's also dense housing directly to the east of this that's acting as a buffer in that means. So while I support the concept of having to do this, I don't know if I support the whole idea of giving up the whole, you're giving away half of that corner as a strict commercial, in the intensive strict commercial. So it's just, I'm conflicted because I see the benefits on both sides. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that.
I do have thoughts. I agree with you 100%. And I've been quiet because I'm trying to wrap my head around my objections and the benefits, because there are both in my mind. I don't like giving up 120th, and the proposed area for this housing is right on 120th. So I wasn't real thrilled about that. And it appears that the car wash and part of the proposed residential will be directly across from each other, I think. It was hard to see on the aerial map because all this one, this shows well, but the aerial that was shown didn't have the car wash on it either. So I was just wondering if that would be too close. And as you see right here, it's across this, is that an alley entrance, I think? So those aren't usually very big. So those two things kind of bother me a little bit with this. However, I'm hearing, and actually, not for the first time, that we've been overly optimistic about the commercial prospects in the area currently. It's a large piece of property that might wait a while before it is developed in any way. Looking at the resident comments, they were saying, not they didn't want more housing, but they didn't want more nail salons, dentists, or car washes, you know? So that's telling me they still want the commercial, but in order to get the commercial, we might need to have more roofs. So, and of course, living in the south area, too. I'm not exactly sure that I should be the one who's spearheading something like this, although I've talked to family members who live up there, and, you know, they're like, eh, it's hard to say. They're like, you know, we have to drive quite a ways to get an extra grocery store. How do we get that grocery store? We might need more houses, you know, or housing. So I'm conflicted. I agree with you on this. I can understand that it's giving up this much, because it's about 50% of the site, you know, might actually at some point realize a great benefit. So I don't know if maybe I would change the structure of it how it is, and I'm not sure if I would feel different if it was one-third rather than almost 50% of the site. Those are just ideas rolling around in my head.
I would ask, I would like to ask the staff, just in a nutshell, to the chair, what exactly is the change? In like one sentence?
Yeah, can I take that question?
Yes.
Okay. So the change is primarily focused on the economic development framework map to add residential uses to this property.
As an option.
As an option, correct?
Personally, that sounds okay with me, that we're just making that optional. And of course, whatever comes in here, it's going to go through city council or sorts of policy discussions. And I know that like, the current city council, a lot of people want the idea of like more density, more density means more walkability, people can walk to a store, this kind of thing, and that's a whole other issue. And so I could see this could fit into something like that, you know? I think more options are good.
Any other discussion? At this time, can I have a motion on this case?
I'll do it.
Commissioner Schecter?
For approval, I move that the planning commission enter a finding that the requested land use plan amendment for the property located at the southeast corner of East 120th Avenue and Chambers Road, contained case LUP 25-0002, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such finding, recommend that the city approve the land use plan amendment.
Do you have a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Van Huglen seconds. So we have a motion by Commissioner Schecter and a second by Commissioner Van Huglen.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
Commissioner Schecter, you didn't say the city council, and I think that's what you meant. You recommend approval to the city council.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking if I somehow did not say that.
Okay, you just said city.
Oh. Oh, sorry, I omitted the word council when I was reading this. Okay, would you like to read it again, or?
No, you can just amend your motion to say that you're recommending that to the city council.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to make it clear that, yes, we're recommending this to the city council for approval.
And the secondar accepts the amendment? Okay.
Is there any additional discussion on the motion at this time? Seeing, hearing none, please open electronic voting. The motion passes, four yeses, zero no's, zero abstain. Congratulations to the applicant. Next, the next case of the evening is S24-0016, Murray Family Farms subdivision. I'll open the public hearing on this case. This presentation will, this presentation will follow the same format as the last presentation, with presentation from the applicant and the staff, questions from the commission and public comments. I will ask planner Kathleen Taylor to please announce this case. If you could unmute your mic.
Okay, there we go. This is case number S24-0016, Murray Family Farms, filing number two, to replat three tracks into five tracks and one lot. The property is generally located at the southeast corner of East 112th Avenue and Havana Street, extending southward to East 108th Avenue and eastward to the approximate location of Jamaica Drive, consisting of approximately 72 acres.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Samantha Paul Miller. My address is 1101 Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado 80204. I'm representing the applicant and will provide a brief overview of the Murray Farms project and our application being heard here tonight. Before I dive into the details, I wanted to take a moment to introduce the team with us tonight. We have Ivy Miller with Caris, representing the landowner and applicant. We have Chris Guyen with Cage, representing civil engineering and survey. We have Austin Kane with Wall Kane Consulting. Eric Carlson with Foster, Graham, Milstein and Kalisher, representing legal. And myself, of course, Samantha Paul Miller, representing Norris Design for entitlements and planning. Following our presentation and staff's presentation, we're happy to answer any questions that you have on our application. So many of you are probably familiar with the Murray Family Farms parcel. It's generally located at the intersection of Havana Street and East 112th Avenue, just north of the I-76 and 85 split. Neighborhood developments include River Run Neighborhood to the north, River Oaks Neighborhood is to the east. To our south is a variety of industrial uses, including construction yard, warehousing and outdoor storage. And then to the west is some additional warehouse and I believe distribution facilities. This aerial is a little bit outdated. The Murray Family Farm parcel is the larger parcel extending between 112th down to 108th, and then from Havana Street over to the River Oaks Neighborhood. However, the property under consideration tonight is the western half shown on your screen in orange. This is a portion of the site that's currently owned by the entity D R E K C S Murray Farm Land LLC, rolls off the tongue. The eastern portion of the farm property is owned by the entity Havana Street E Owner LLC, not affiliated with this application. So to be clear. Okay. The larger Murray Family Farm project property is currently split right down the middle between the northern neighborhoods and northern business district character areas of the comp plan. Northern neighborhoods is characterized by a mix of residential land uses and pockets of neighborhoods serving commercial, while the northern business district prioritizes industrial, warehousing, logistics and employment uses. Similar to the vision outlined by the comp plan, the zoning map currently, two represents a transition of land uses across the site from lower to high-density residential on the eastern portion and industrial and commercial uses on the western portion. The application being heard today is not contemplating any change to either the zoning of this property or the comprehensive plan. These designations are not in question. This information I'm providing is just for some context of the property. So speaking of context, I think it's important to note the complicated history of this particular project. Over the last few years, as it's explored a variety of different applications in an effort to best time development with the market. So originally, the project kicked off sometime back in 2021, under the assumption that the full Murray Family Farm parcel would develop under a new planned unit development. This went through the PUD concept schematic phase, in which we presented our initial vision to planning commission at that time. And we also conducted a virtual neighborhood meeting during that phase as well. Now around October 2023, so fast forward about a year and a half, it was decided that PUD zoning was losing favor within the city and straight zoning applications would be better received. And that's true. You're seeing, you see that today with the new land use plan adoption and code adoption. The change in that direction actually required us then to do two concurrent applications because you can't rezone just a portion of a parcel. because you can't rezone just a portion of a parcel. We would first have to modify the plat to create new parcels and then rezone them so that those two applications were moving concurrently. But due to the time that it took to get through that, also with market volatility, we opted to withdraw our application formally in December of 2024. And that brings us to the application we're discussing tonight. After the last four years and an abundance of patience from the Murray family, they have requested as part of the original sale of the land that a portion of the land surrounding the existing farmhouse and farm property, if you will, get deeded back to the family's name. So that's where this application leads us. The final plat application is being requested so that we can make good on that promise that we made to the Murray families back when they sold this property. Okay. So what are we asking for? As I mentioned, our request for you tonight is for recommendation of approval of the, or recommendation of approval to the city council of the Murray Family Farms subdivision plat filing number two, which is the mechanism outlined by the city to create legal parcels that can then be deeded back to the Murray family as part of that original purchase and sale agreement. In addition to the creation of those parcels, this plat would also establish easements for future improvements to the adjacent 112th Avenue and Havana Street rights of way, which were requested by staff. Okay. So shown here on the screen is the current plat. You can see it includes three tracts which follow the current zoning boundaries for the property, C 3, I 2, I 1. It's important to note the distinction between tracts and lots, and I'm sure commissioners, you are familiar with that, but for anyone that might be listening in, a tract is not developable, and whereas a lot is developable. So in order to develop the property, a development plan and a plat would be needed to convert these tracts into lots. It's also important to note that where the existing Murray Family Farmhouse sits in relation to everything is part of much larger parcels of land that spans over two tracts. Okay. So the proposed plat, because of the need to deed back only a portion of these parcels or these tracts, new tracts and lots are being proposed, which you can see on your screen that's highlighted, that blue-gray color. Lot 1 includes the Murray family residence, and that is considered a lot because there is a permanent structure there, a residence there, it has access to Havana, that is legally a lot. And then tract F, just to the east, includes the remaining portion of the property that's been requested by the Murrays, which is currently used for outdoor storage staging agricultural use. In addition to these parcel changes, it was requested by staff that easements for future improvements to the surrounding rights of way also be included. You can see those callouts in blue as well. It includes a 20-foot right-of-way dedication on 112th, a 10-foot right-of-way dedication on Havana, and easement, so there's an eight-foot utility easement on both of those right-of-ways, as well as a 20-foot South Adams County Water and Sanitation District easement. And again, it's important to note that all the parcels that are shown here, with the exception of the residential lot proposed for the Murray residence, are all designated as tracts. Any future improvement to the property would require a development plan application and a final plat to convert these tracts into lots. And with that, I'm going to hand off the presentation to Eric Carlson to go through the approval criteria. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Eric Carlson, Foster Graham, Milstein, and Kalisher. That's 360 South Garfield, Denver, 80209. Pleasure to be here today. You know, as a procedural item, of course, you don't review plats on each of your agenda, right? This was, in fact, a call-up by the city council, right? They requested that this go through the public hearing process, and I think, you know, for good reason. This is a little bit of an interesting case in the sense of it's a final plat, but what are we creating? We're creating just a single lot and multiple tracts, right? And what else do we know? We know that the vast majority of this property will have to be replatted, will have to go back through that entire process, it will, you know, be a new development agreement, all of those things, right? In order to develop this as it's kind of contemplated by its industrial zoning. So we put that out there as we look at our approval criteria because we are, in fact, consistent with all of the plat approval criteria. Here, this isn't a zoning request, it's not a comp plan request, it's a pretty technical, you know, what does your code say about subdivisions and plats? So is it consistent with the approved rezoning, concept plan, or PUD? We don't have any of those tonight. This is just an application for our plat, so we're not asking for any changes to rezoning concept plans or PUDs. It is, of course, consistent with the specific zone district. It's consistent with the previous agreements on the property, right? Getting a conveyable lot back to the Murrays as well. This won't violate any state, federal, local laws. The layout of the roads and utilities, again, a little bit nuanced in this case, right? Because we're not really suggesting any layout of roads and driveways, but it will, of course, provide sufficient access to the Murrays for that lot 1, and will comply with the remaining standards, and we're not going to create any adverse impacts. This is really a plat in order to preserve the status quo there as well. So this is, let's see, I think there were a couple more on here. We can talk about public safety and transportation. The development agreement, of course, from 2009 is still in effect, and that development agreement kind of contemplated that there may be an interim plating step here for the Murray lot, and that when we go to develop the property, there will be a consideration of all of the traffic and safety features, and of course, no phasing plan. So, I mean, to close it out tonight, you know, of course, all attorneys, you know, have a tendency or maybe a temptation to make things more complicated than they are. So for a risk of doing that tonight, I really, you know, will just simplify this to say this has been kind of contemplated as, oh, what's the simplest way to get lot 1 back? We'll convey that to the Murrays, as was contemplated between those agreements, and the remainder of development of the property will be reserved for a future process, including a replat. So our teams here tonight, we're happy to answer any questions. Of course, your staff has been wonderful along the way. There are a few instances where Ellie and I had a little bit of our work cut out for ourselves here to kind of put together the nuance of kind of a little bit of a unique application. So we respectfully request your recommendation to the city council of approval, and thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you, both of you, for your presentation. And I'll get this one opened up. Case number 24-0016, Murray Farms. Okay, before we deep dive, of course, they already did most of that for me, but thank you so much, I want to talk about what a final plat is, because typically, a final plat would not actually be coming before you. In this particular, a final plat is a legal instrument to establish boundaries for lots and tracts, and per our Land Development Code, the final plat is typically done administratively, unless it is requested by the city council. In this particular case, the city council has asked to review the final plat. It does not impact zoning or the allowable uses within the zoning district. A development plan contains all the details on how the site will actually look and function. That would be something forthcoming in the future when someone chooses to develop the property. What is the planning commission's role? It is to recommend action to the city council based on whether or not you believe the final plat to meet all the requirements of our Land Development Code. Here's another aerial photo of the site. You just see that we're, as Samantha mentioned, we've got 112th to the north and Havana to the west. The property right now with the three different tracts is three different zones. So the one there to the north is zone commercial, C 3. You see one labeled as I 1, that's the industrial, light industrial zoning, and I 2 is the medium-density industrial zone. Samantha also pointed out on our comprehensive plan that it does fall within the character area of northern business district, which would typically include industrial warehousing, some sort of commercial. The final plat, if approved, will create a separate lot for Mr. Murray's farm. Right now, three tracts currently exist. The proposal is to replat those boundaries into five tracts and one lot. The size of the entire property is approximately 72 acres. A tract cannot be further developed without becoming a lot via the subdivision process. I know Samantha said that, but that's the most important thing to know, is that these tracts can't go any further until they become a lot. Here's the property as it currently exists with the three different parcels on it that are all individually, each a tract. As proposed, I have them outlined in terms of what zone each one is. So tract A is in red, that's the commercially zoned property. Tract G, just below it, is the light industrial, I 1 zone, and then you see that dark purple, lot 1, and tract C, those are both zoned, the medium-density industrial, and just eastward is tract F and D, which are the light industrial zone. There is no new development planned at this time, and because of that, we are not requiring a development agreement because there's no changes proposed to how the land exists currently. No public comments were received. I just got a question clarifying the location, that was all. And then we'll go ahead and go through the approval criteria. So the first one, criteria A, is the subdivision consistent with any approved rezoning or concept plan? As the applicant mentioned, they're not requesting a rezone, so that's, therefore, it meets the criteria. Criteria B, the subdivision is consistent with and implements the intent of the specific zoning district in which it is located. All of the parcel boundaries align with the zone boundaries. So in that case, it does meet the criteria B. Criteria C, there's no evidence to suggest that the subdivision is violating any state, federal, or local laws. It has been reviewed by multiple divisions within the city, multiple entities, including the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District, the Fire Department as well, Freiko, Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company. Multiple agencies have reviewed this application, and it has been shown not to violate anything. Criteria D. Who? Didn't like me there for a second. It talks about the general layout of the roads and driveways, overall infrastructure. Nothing is changing at this point in time. The only thing to note is that tract F would need some sort of internal roadway to access itself off of Havana, so it could not develop until there actually was an internal roadway in place. Criteria E, the subdivision complies with all applicable city standards and does not unnecessarily create lots or patterns that would make anything difficult. By dividing this property as proposed, it actually makes it easier for future development to occur because the existing farm will have its own piece of land. All future development, as mentioned, would require a development plan, and as a part of that, it would also have to be preceded by a subdivision to convert that, any one of the tracts into a lot. At that time, that's when drainage and traffic and related infrastructure, all of those things would be reviewed. Criteria F, the subdivision, you have two choices here, it has to do one or the other, and the first one is it will not result in any substantial or undue adverse effect on the adjacent properties, traffic conditions, parking, public improvements, et cetera. Because they are making no changes proposing to how the property currently functions, it would not result in any substantial or undue adverse effects. So it does meet this criteria. Criteria G, adequate and sufficient public safety, transportation, utility facilities, recreation parks, all of that. Any future development will need to demonstrate that it does provide adequate public safety, transportation facilities, infrastructure, schools, parks, all of that. That would be reviewed at time of a development plan. Criteria H, a development agreement between the city and the applicant has been executed. There is no development agreement required with this subdivision because there is no new development occurring. Their attorney did mention that there is a subdivision agreement in place back from 2009, and he is correct that that remains. And basically, what that says is they can't do anything else until they look at the land all in its entirety. And right now, all they're doing is creating a lot, so there's no development occurring. A development agreement is not required. Criteria I, as applicable, the proposed phasing plan for the development is rational. In this case, there is no proposed phasing plan, so it is not applicable. Staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Van Heusen?
So I'm wondering what the tract F, it doesn't look like it matches to me very well. Is there a reason that that tract itself is isolated from either the lot or the other tracts?
Good evening again. You're right, and that is a separate tract, so it wasn't included with lot 1 because it's a separate zone district. We would have had to rezone it and make it more complicated than it needs to be, and it doesn't have any permanent structures on it as it sits today. So it still functions just fine as it is as a tract and not needing to be a lot. So that's why it's that way.
Thank you, that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there anyone, excuse me, any members of the public who wish to provide comments on this case? Seeing none. At this, let's see, is there anyone, actually, is there anyone attending virtually that would like to make comment on this case?
No one signed up beforehand, and no one has raised their hand.
Thank you. At this time, I will now close the public hearing for this case. Is there any discussion from the commission? Seeing none. Can I please have a motion on this case?
I will make a motion. I move that the planning commission enter a finding that the requested Murray Family Farms filing number two final plat contained in case S 24-0016 meets the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such finding, recommend approval of the final plat to the city council.
I'll second. Is there any additional discussion by the commission? Seeing none. All right, please open electronic voting. Motion passes, four yeses, zero no's, zero abstains. I'd like to congratulate the applicant and Mr. Miller. Let's see, to the next item at hand. LDC text amendments. I will open the public hearing on the text amendments. This presentation will follow a similar format as the last presentation with presentation from staff, question from the commission, and public comments. I will ask Planner Sung Han to please introduce these topics.
Great, good evening, and thank you for having me here. So today, we're here to bring two ordinances to you, that's amending the 2009 Land Development Code. That's amending the 2009 Land Development Code. And so just to kind of start from the top and provide a little bit of background information on kind of the timeline of where we've been so far. As you may recall, city staff presented an overview of the various state housing and land use laws that have been passed in 2024. And more specifically, we had a joint study session around this with city council on April 14, 2025. And so in that presentation, it covered the recent, again, state housing and land use legislation, and how those requirements would be addressed and integrated into the two, into the new 2025 Land Development Code that was adopted a few weeks ago. And so tonight, staff is bringing forward, again, two text amendments that will incorporate existing standards that have already been adopted in that 2025 Land Development Code into the 2009 Land Development Code. And mainly, this step is necessary to bring the city into compliance with the state laws that had implementation deadlines as early of June this year. I believe one is for June, the ADUs for June, and the definition around family is July of this year. And so these proposed amendments, again, mirror the updated standards that have been included in the 2025 Land Development Code and are intended to ensure that Commerce City remains compliant with those state laws and continues to be competitive for future state housing and infrastructure funding opportunities. And so I'll just, and this slide was just a note to say that, you know, this is a temporary stopgap measure as we transition into the legislative rezoning process, which we'll, you know, discuss with Planning Commission and City Council in February of next year. But that process will bring properties under new code, which includes the standards that we'll go over today to help fully align with the current state requirements. So just to go over the first ordinance specifically on the definition of family and its implications on occupancy limits. House Bill 241007 was approved in April of 2024 with an effective date of July 2024, July 1 of 2024. And so this law prohibits municipalities from imposing occupancy requirements based on family relationships, but allows limits based on other groundings like health and safety standards or affordable housing program guidelines. And so the, a little bit of a background on this, the intended goal of this legislation was to make it easier to share homes between roommates and potentially smaller families to help afford increasingly high housing costs. So just to take a look at our current standards in the 2009 code. Commerce City, like other cities in Colorado, we do have occupancy standards that regulate occupancy based on familial relationships. So the current, the city currently allows a maximum of three unrelated individuals per dwelling unit, and also includes a definition that only one person or two or more person related by blood, marriage, adoption, or legal custody can live together. And then also has a third provision about not more than one registered sex offender being able to live together in a single dwelling unit. So in terms of our proposed adjustments to the 2009 code, our recommendation is to update the definition of family to allow, and change the definition, to allow a group of persons not related by blood, marriage, or adoption to live together in a dwelling unit. And so we're just recommending specifically amending that specific portion of the definition of family to align with state law. And so it's important to note also that as part of this update, we would defer to the occupancy standards that are outlined in the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code that the city has already adopted in their charter. And so the International Property Maintenance Code regulates occupancy based on square footage of bedrooms, which provide a more consistent and adjusted standard for enforcing occupancy. And so in addition, we are working with city council to update our building code to remove similar restrictions that limit occupancy based on relationships and total square footage of the home. And so right now, the LDC standards are essentially just reflective of those building code standards. But we didn't bring that ordinance to you today because I believe the planning commission's recommendations are focused particularly on the Land Development Code itself and not the building code. And then just to get into, again, that 2021 International Property Maintenance Code that's already been adopted and in place by the city. It has a minimum bedroom size of 70 square feet and requires that the bedrooms be, have at least 50 square feet per occupant that's living in the dwelling unit. So that's the first ordinance with respect to the definition of family. And so the next one is focused on accessory dwelling units. So again, the intent of this law from the state is to increase more affordable housing options in the city. And under this law, municipalities are required to allow an accessory dwelling unit where single-family detached units are permitted with the following requirements in mind. And so that the law requires that ADUs be approved through an administrative review process, and so that is not subject to a public hearing with the exception of historic districts, which we don't have any in Commerce City today. And also prohibits municipalities from requiring off-street parking requirements. And also prohibits cities from requiring owner occupancy as well, requirements. And the third is a requirement that you cannot restrict the design and dimensional standards so that they're more stringent than the single-family home. And so I guess one example might be is if you have maybe strict requirements about the roofline of the ADU, but those aren't applied to the single-family home, that, those type of standards wouldn't be allowed. And so this slide should look fairly familiar to you all if you guys remember the April presentation, which if you do, you have great memory, so kudos to you. But, so the proposed adjustments consistent with the new Land Development Code is to allow attached, contained, and detached ADUs where single-family detached homes are allowed. And in the 2009 Land Development Code, that is R1, R2, and agricultural zoning districts. And so to align with these state laws, that's kind of where, from a use perspective, where we would allow it. And again, going back to that previous slides, to align with state law, we recommend not requiring off-street parking or owner occupancy for the ADUs. And from a size perspective, to keep the accessory, ADUs actually accessory to the primary dwelling unit, we recommend having a maximum size requirement of 25% of the primary dwelling unit or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. But also including a baseline allowance of 750 square feet for those cases where maybe the primary dwelling is particularly smaller. There's no maximum size for basement units since they would be hidden from public view. And then also a requirement, standards around height that says require that any detached accessory dwelling units be no taller than the height of the primary home or 20, 20 feet, whichever is less, to promote, again, the accessory, kind of intent of the accessory dwelling units. From a design and location perspective, we have standards that talk about requiring detached accessory dwelling units to have shared vehicular access. So, and so we would want to avoid the instance of having perhaps two driveways that serve in the, the ADUs and the primary home independently. And then also a locational standard that the accessory detached dwelling unit be located behind the primary home. We also have standards that, for attached ADUs, to not have the appearance of a multifamily home from the street. So having multiple accessways walking up to the home, and then multiple mailboxes as well. So those are the quick kind of overview of the specific changes and amendments to the 2009 Land Development Code. We've also included the exhibits that include the more detailed red line changes to the code language. And so it's staff's recommendation for approval that Planning Commission recommends that the city council adopt the text amendments to the 2009 Land Development Code regarding ADUs and residential occupancy. And I believe the motions are actually in two separate, just to clarify that. And I'll open up to any questions as well.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Can you read just the simple text again, the new definition of family, or put that back up?
Yeah. So it's a simple text change, but right now, in the definition of family, Part B, if you look at that exhibit, it says, "A group of persons not real, a group of not more than three persons not related by blood, marriage, or adoption living together in a dwelling unit." That's the current language. And so the new language would be, "A group of persons not related by blood, marriage, or adoption living together in a dwelling unit." So it's just a simple red line change acknowledging that more than one or more than three persons that are not related by blood, marriage, or adoption can live together.
Okay, thanks.
You had a question relative to that too, just to, because I understand the intent behind that and not to attack the construct of the term "family," but is there another nomenclature that would be more appro? I, because I understand what the intent is. You're trying to quantify and qualify occupant load. But is there, is there case language relative to that? You get my, what my question is?
I do, and I think we did look at that to think about the best way to amend the 2009 LDC to be in compliance with state law. And as Sung mentioned, that the Land Development, the 2025 Land Development Code that was recently adopted and will be in effect as properties get rezoned, it does have kind of a more nuanced approach, more direct approach on the use of the term "family." As we were looking at our current code, the term "single family" in "family" is used dozens, hundreds of times throughout the code. So there wasn't a simple fix to change how family was used throughout the code. So looking at some of the guidance from the Department of Local Affairs on how municipalities handle this, this, one of the approaches was simply strike the limitation on the number of unrelated persons living in the property. And I think because we're at a stopgap measure, we felt this was the easiest approach. You know, maybe not the cleanest, but I think with the new Land Development Code going into effect, we address it more comprehensively.
Yeah.
Understood.
In a new Land Development Code, we use a term "household" rather than "family."
Oh, that's, okay, that's really interesting. That actually, I had the exact question you did, actually, yeah. Interesting, so, oh, very interesting. So the new Land Development Code, Development Code coming in is going to, okay, use like a whole new nomenclature, basically. A new term for this concept. And it was household or something?
Yeah, so it, the new term is "household," and is generally described as a single housekeeping unit that share their home together, but is not a group home. And so it defines group homes and households separately so that they can be regulated differently as well. And that's typically the best practice approach we've been seeing.
Yeah, I have more, but we can, I'll save it for discussion.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Seeing none. It doesn't appear that there are, I will call, but it doesn't appear that there are any, any one in attendance that has questions. So I will call that anyone attending that would like to make a comment. Seeing none. Is there anyone attending virtually that would like to make a comment?
There is not, Chair.
Right. Let's see, so at this time, I'll close public hearing for these cases. Is there any discussion that is needed before we make a motion on the accessory dwelling unit case?
Yeah, I had the same, like, sort of like, maybe intuition you did, or just again, my plain language thing. I, like, it just really felt like, oh, we need a new term for this. And I think Colorado's law and New HB makes all kinds of sense. We shouldn't be more legislating morality about who should live with who. We should just be, what's safe and healthy, that's what Colorado, that's what our laws should do. But on the other hand, I don't think changing the meaning of, yeah, changing meanings of some simple words can have follow-on effects, right? So I'm really glad to hear that actually, this is a new thing in the new coming law. A whole new regime is going to be in place. So, that's cool, yeah, I'm down with it.
Any other discussion? All right. Let's see, can we please, let's see, can we have a motion on introducing the accessory dwelling units? Commissioner Nelson.
I move that the Planning Commission enter a finding that the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code is satisfactory for the Commerce City and hereby recommend allowing accessory dwelling units to the city council. Do you want me to read the second one?
I second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Schechter. Is there any additional discussion?
I do have a question. Do I need to read the second approval? Because since we're doing two cases in one, right?
I think we're going to do them separately.
Oh, we're going to do it separately.
This is just for the ADU.
Okay, just the ADUs, understood.
Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. We'll have the motion on this and then have the motion.
So if we're all clear, if you could, we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a Commissioner, a second by Commissioner Schechter on the accessory dwelling unit. I don't believe there's any discussion. Please open electronic voting. The motion passes, four yeses, zero no, zero abstains. Let's see, can we please have a motion to amend the definition of family?
I move that the Planning Commission enter a finding that the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code is satisfactory for Commerce City and hereby, or thereby, recommend amending the definition of family to the city council.
I second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Van Hezen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please open electronic voting. This motion passes, four yeses, zero no, zero abstain. Let's see, is there any commission business to discuss at this time? Seeing none. Is there any other attorney business to discuss at this time?
No attorney business.
Thank you. Is there any staff business to discuss at this time?
Just a couple of quick updates for you. Wanted to let you know that the city council did adopt the Land Development Code, the 2025 Land Development Code, on first and second reading. And so that's in effect now for new annexations and zoning applications. All other applications will have to wait until we go through the legislative rezoning next year. So we do have a study session planned with you in February. And that's a joint study session on February 9 with city council. So put that in your calendars. That's to talk about the action plan for the legislative zoning, again, February 9. We do have an upcoming Planning Commission meeting on December 2. And we wanted to poll and see if we do have a quorum for that December 2 of the members here. If, and Andrew can also send out an email to the full commission to poll the rest of the people. But we thought we'd ask if the members present are going to be here on December 2.
I plan on being in attendance. I just have a standing conflict on Mondays and Wednesdays. Typically, my wife is in school.
Oh, yes.
I have a special needs son, so it's hard to get childcare. So that was my conflict with the previous meeting.
With the previous meeting.
So, but I should be, I should be in attendance.
Okay.
Yeah, I should be in attendance.
Okay, thank you. We do have one item on the agenda for that meeting. And then my last update just has to do with the housing needs assessment. If you recall, you went to a joint If you recall, you went to a joint study session with city council to hear the presentation by the consultant that was preparing the housing needs assessment. Since that time, they finished writing the report, and they had their final community meeting, and the draft report is now in the process of being finalized. So they're taking staff's comments and finalizing that, and then we will be able to disseminate the final housing needs assessment to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And I do have one, one staff point just to bring up, as we talked about previously, because there was something on here about, begin thinking about what we're scheduled for 2026, is maybe start thinking about a joint study session between Planning Commission and city council on, as a visioning session for goals. We had talked about this previously, and we wanted to kick the can past the election. So after that time, it seems like the new council members will have, maybe February, March, just not have enough time, so they're assimilated into the processes.
Yeah.
Not drinking from the fire hoses much, but to align.
And you said a visioning session about goals?
A goals, to, to understand the, the city council, the, the new makeup of the new city council, their goals for the city.
Good. That sounds great.
And to align with us, so we, we understand where everyone's coming from.
Well, believe it or not, those agendas into March are filling up, so we'll get on a study session slot.
Perfect.
And one other item, our city attorney wants to update your bylaws. There's some old outdated language in there. It says you meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays, and that's incorrect. And there's some other things in there that are incorrect. And so we'd like to bring that in January to you, and have a discussion about the bylaws, and then we'd come back at the subsequent February meeting with the draft for you to vote on.
Perfect.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Great. That's all the business that I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Heesem?
Yeah, I have a question about that. So we're going to renew and reevaluate the bylaws for the Planning Commission? Is that correct?
Right, just updating the language. There's some out, out-of-date language in the bylaws, and so we want to bring those suggested changes to you in January.
And if we're making changes, I might have one at that point, too, not regarding that, but Planning Commission is the only commission, I think, that does not allow you to be a member of other commissions or boards. And so for me to accept this appointment, I had to give up two commission slots on others, and they were very important to me. So it was a real struggle. So if we could maybe get a background on why that was put in, it might make sense, but I couldn't really get anyone to explain to me what the rationale was behind the two commissions that I had to leave, which were DEI and EPAC, which is now Epic.
Okay.
Because they didn't seem to conflict to me with Planning Commission.
Okay. We can talk to the person that supports boards and commissions and see if that person is aware of it, and also to the city manager's office and find out more about that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If that is it for this evening, the time is now 7:47, and this is the end of the Planning Commission meeting for November. Thank you.